Well, to be sure, if you hear gunshots and you continue on, you're a moron. Maybe that's these stupid people over on this side. But I think you just want to control us. That's wrong. And I hope... Boy, do I hope that you people see it that way. It's our property. There's no incidents of any issue going on anywhere on any of the properties that I'm aware of. And if there was, you should have brought it forward. I would ask you not to approve this, May. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this public hearing? Questions? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Seven B, Chapter 131-23, Offenses. Sponsored by Mayor Weston by request.
Okay, this public hearing is for offenses and what it is basically referring to is it addresses public fines and things that people are found to have broken the no printing on city property. So, again, please identify yourself.
Mary Hever, 97, Spruce Lane. This ordinance change is to add a section to the ordinance called Hunting on City Property, and it states, "No person shall hunt, trap, or otherwise pursue wildlife in or on any city property unless authorized in writing by the city manager." And there's a fine of up to $1,000 if you violate that. Now, if you look at the background, very sparse background that was provided, it says, "The hunting, trapping, and/or pursuit of wildlife on city property presents hazards to users of these public properties." And yet, you are requesting, you're saying this is a hazard, these activities, and yet you are requesting that the city manager give written permission to these people to engage in these hazards, which you have just identified. That makes no sense whatsoever. Again, there is no proof, there is no demonstration here that there's an issue. Now, if this is dealing with the invasive cotton-tailed rabbit that the Fish and Game Department has placed on city property, which is near our property, and is proposing to introduce it onto state land, the little rabbits with the radio callers, which they're tracking and spending millions of dollars on, and which is attracting more and more predators to our area and affecting the livestock and the animals that already exist in that area, then come out and say that. Because Rick gave you an example of that parcel as well, that there've been no issues. And so, what are you talking about? How many parcels are there of city land, public land, which we can use as members of the public? How many of those are an issue? Are you going to, how do you even accomplish this? Someone comes to you and says, "I want to hunt on such-and-such property," and you give them written permission, Mr. Manager. Do you prohibit everyone else from being on that property at the time they want to hunt? I doubt that. I mean, people need to use common sense in our area. If you know it's hunting season and you're going for a walk on Old Garrison Road, then you best wear orange, so that you do not look like a deer. I mean, this is an infringement on our freedoms, our rights, our ability to use public property. For what? For what reason? There's no demonstrable reason given here. And again, if you want to do this, do it on a case-by-case basis. Come and prove it. Be reasonable, be rational, lay your facts out. Let the public speak on it. That's how this works. That's what we are looking to do for, not to infringe on our rights. So, again, on this one, no, there is no need for this, there's no demonstrated need, and this should be voted no. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for this second public hearing, offenses?
Remember it again? You better call me a racist. But if you're gonna allow the Congolese people into our community, I don't know anything about where they came from, but I do suspect they've got a lot of open space. What's our open space around here? If we don't have much, we've got some public lands and some private land. But if these people come, what are they gonna do? You think you're gonna keep them out of that land? Just my racist in me says, "I don't think so." What are you gonna do? Find them? Where are they gonna get the money? It's just the stupid in me thinking out loud right now, but, you know, what the hell? It's all true. Think about it. There's no demonstrated need for any of this. None. It doesn't make any sense, except control. There are many people I know, I live with, that come from all over our state. All over our state, from up north to the western part of our state, to hunt there. I'm not a hunter. I got married a while ago, so I won't hunt anymore. But I'm pretty sure that those people wouldn't like it if they drove all the way over here and found out, "Why am I in handcuffs again? What? I didn't get it in writing? Never had to. Nobody told us." It's not the people from around here, it's the other people. You're not thinking of them either. Control. That's all it is, is control. Why? No demonstrated need. I'd ask you again, would you please vote no on this? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to our second public hearing, offenses? Okay, questions? Public hearing is closed.
Number eight, Citizens Forum.
Okay, Citizens Forum is an opportunity for citizens, business owners, and taxpayers to come and speak to the business of the city. If you come to the podium, please identify yourself, and I will keep time for five minutes. Thank you. Citizens Forum's open.
Last time, Mary Hever, 97, Spruce Lane. I'm gonna read to you tonight some excerpts from a letter from a former Dover resident who pays attention to our community and is warning us of what's coming. July 29, 2014. My name is Paul Spelman. I have been following with deep concern the possibility of Congolese refugees, let's make no mistake, they are illegals, being relocated to your cities. I was born and raised in Dover and attended local schools. I spent most of my professional life as a part-time owner and owner-operator of a business in Lewiston, Maine. I have since retired and am living in Florida. I write to you because I care about and am very concerned about the future of your communities if the refugees are eventually located. Having lived through this situation in Lewiston, I believe I am qualified to give you an honest and straightforward assessment of what to expect, what will soon become of your cities if this happens. The government's definition of refugees today could not be further from the traditional definition. Although AORIS has canceled the August 13 meeting, do not believe for a moment that they have gone away for good. They have retreated because they realize, due to the national immigration issues, public sentiment is not on their side. When they do return, expect them to be very tactical in their approach, better prepared, and wield a heavier hand. The first group of Somali refugees arrived in Lewiston in 2002 during the dark of night. Nobody, including city officials, was prepared for the onslaught of people who arrived with nothing but the shirts on their backs. The number that arrived initially is still not known today, but most estimates are between 1,000 and 2,000. Although there is no concrete number, the total number of refugees living in Lewiston in 2014 is believed to be around 6,000. Foster Daily Democrat recently reported that a representative from AORIS stated, "Only 100 Congolese would be relocated to the tri-city area." To believe AORIS's number would be dangerously naive, that number simply represents the first wave. The burden on the taxpayers in that city of about 36,000 has been tremendous. Lewiston is a poor city and a poor state. State and federal governments have not and will not pick up refugee-related expenses, leaving the taxpayers of Lewiston to bear the entire financial burden. In very many cases, this burden is at the expense of the working poor, veterans, disabled, and elderly, most of whom have lived and worked their entire lives in Lewiston. When it comes to social services, expect the refugees to go directly to the head of the line. If AORIS is successful, you should expect your costs to increase much more than proportionately. You should plan for the needs of additional teachers and administrators to provide training to current and future teachers in English as a second language. You should be prepared for the outrage from parents and children when the Congolese demand their children be allowed to attend other neighborhood schools, thereby displacing the children currently enrolled in their own neighborhood schools, and that those children be moved to the schools in the Somali neighborhood. If AORIS is successful, be prepared to increase the budgets and manpower for your police departments, as well as adding additional police in the schools. The Somali and Bantu tribes are constantly at odds, and there have been numerous public incidents of physical altercations between the two tribes. You should expect accusations of racism and for political correctness to rear its ugly head. Most Lewiston residents will not speak openly or publicly about the Somalis or the Bantos or the other groups, nor speak to the issues the city is facing. They choose instead to keep their concerns to themselves or, at the most, to a close circle of friends for fear of being labeled racist. There's been some public chatter that nothing can be done. I do not believe that. There is strength in numbers. You are fortunate to have the benefit of three communities working together, and by working together, you can defeat this when AORIS comes back with a heavier hand. Do not assume, because they called off the August 13 meeting, that this matter has gone away. If proactive steps are not taken now, your communities will be changed forever. Because I don't have enough time to read that full letter to you, that full letter shall be read into the record. I'm going to select Councilor Cheney to do that. I have copies for all of you in order to do that, and for the city clerk. And the final thing I'm going to say is, let's start from the very beginning, shall we? I am formally requesting filing a 91A with my comments, my subsequent comments, starting with where this started. Who started the first contact? Where? When? What was involved? And then, in addition to that, but not limited to that, I am requesting all notes, emails, times, dates, locations, participants, summary of what happened, phone calls. I don't need a log, but I want to know when, who, what the content of the conversation was, any and all documentation that we provided to them, AORIS or any refugee group related, anything they provided to us, any and all contact with AORIS, whether it was... I know somebody knew something about them before this all started, and we've got to get to the bottom of it. So, any, anything related to AORIS or other refugee groups that are involved in this, as well as any and all contact that the city, staff, individuals have had with state, local, and federal entities. The future that Mr. Spelman laid out is not our future here in Dover, because I think you can see from behind me, we're up here telling you, "No." Thank you.
David Scott, 220 Matt Road. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, city managers, councilors. Will the Dover schools be the entry point of Ebola in New Hampshire? Emma Tobin, the director of AORIS in Manchester, contacted the city of Dover several months ago. She did not ask how many refugee children from the Congo would Dover consider taking. She told us there would be 100 children coming from the Congo for settlement in Dover, followed by 100 more every year, reaching 500 in the coming five years. They may be followed by family members from the Congo, so families can be reunited. We were told there may be some federal funds to offset increased Dover cost in the first year. The amount of financial help and its source was not revealed. When Ms. Tobin was asked by Representative of the Dover Administration, "Suppose we don't feel we can handle this number of refugees?" The answer was, "It is not your call." There is much more than the cost and educational issues. French is the native language of these children. We would have to put them into special education program, which has a much higher cost per student. The impact on our school budget has not been calculated. The costs of housing, food, and medical costs are not known. As I said before, could this imposed federal program cause Dover students to be exposed to the Ebola virus? Ebola is a dangerous and deadly, as the bubonic plague. In the early 1330s, an outbreak of bubonic plague broke out in China. In China, it traveled to the Black Sea, from there to Sicily, and then to the mainland and the rest of Europe. The disease struck and killed people with terrible speed. The Italian writer Boccaccio said his victims often ate lunch with their friends and dinner with their ancestors in paradise. After five years, 25 billion people were dead, one-third of Europe's population. I would expect the Dover PTA to take a strong stand against this potential Dover danger to our Dover students, apart from any cost issues.
Thank you for coming in.
David Martin, Ten Linda Avenue, Dover. On the Congolese proposal by AORIS for refugees for Dover. We are a nation of immigrants, mostly. We love immigrants. Most of us have relatives who arrived here in a boat. Perhaps the Godspeed in Jamestown, the Mayflower in Plymouth, Mass, Ellis Island, and so on. However, we are a nation of laws. Our ancestors largely came here with permission. Many stopped in Ellis Island off of New York City. What was Ellis Island? It was a stopping point for sure, but mostly it was a quarantine and a barrier to make sure everybody had papers, that we had jobs for them, and that they weren't carrying infectious diseases. If so, they could treat them there. Real refugees, because of the conditions they're forced to live in, would be at high risk for infectious diseases. Questions? What is their medical condition? Where did they cross the border? How did they cross the border? By ship or by jet? Who paid for those trips? We've heard of terrible illnesses like tuberculosis and scabies that our southern border refugees have. Also, there is a worldwide pandemic starting of Ebola. Is there also not a danger these refugees will be taken advantage of during their voyage? The funds for refugee placement will only last eight months. Where does that money come from? Likely from taxes, from you and me. We would rather our veterans and disabled be cared of first. Also homeless, orphans, elderly, and widows, too. Isn't the most compassionate society the one who takes care of its own first? There are also placement fees paid for successful placement refugees, often up to $2,000 a person? Shouldn't these fees be paid to the communities who accept them, not the placement agencies? What happens after the eight months? Where will the money come from? Dover, Dover, Dover. What happens to the landlords that put up these people, and all of a sudden, the rent money disappears or starts dwindling? If 100 families are sent a year, and we assume five per family, the total is 500 per year, 3,000 per six years, and so on, where will it end? Manchester's taken refugees in for 10 years, and what are they told after 10 years? "You're being selfish." Outside groups are chiding them for not wanting more. What about our current residents who came here as refugees many years ago? Do we care about them? What about jobs? This challenging economy doesn't have many jobs to offer. Many, many young adults and youth who are trying to pay off their college loans and/or start an adult life, we're looking for jobs for them. How can we have jobs for others? Whose jobs will they take away? The formula for success of a community is simple, and I have a listing of my ancestors when they came over here. First, a green card, citizenship, or other valid work permit. Then you find a job. Then you find out where to live based on your new job location. This process seems to be trying to skip a few necessary steps. First, state government in New Hampshire should be notified, the governor of the legislature. Second, Concord should screen any potential cities and then talk to those cities first. Dover is being looked at because it is successful. Why not Portsmouth, then? Aren't they successful? Exeter? Derry, London Derry? Concord?
You have one minute left.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This raises more questions. Are we not a sovereign state?
Yes.
Is this not the United States of America? States is plural. A union of 50 states, each with their own rights and their own constitution. Should we be told what to do? I think not. The United States Constitution is not the Washington DC Constitution, it's not the AORIS Constitution, it's not any other constitution, or any other refugee placement agency's constitution. Alongside citizens, we will not have refugees. Let's take care of our own less fortunate first. Thank you.
I'm Don Yandelina, Little Worth Road. I may have a little different view, so here it is. What we have here is a Trojan horse immigration policy, a wooden horse, a parting gift from the gods, a policy that is going to have a drastic impact on our country and cities for decades. The current onslaught of illegal immigrants is overwhelming federal facilities that are turning into an uncontrollable crisis. We have 50 sovereign states, and many of its governors have not had any forewarnings from HHS, the feds, and other organizations. Recently, on my way to Concord, I had attempted to reach our governor to ask of her plan, should we have to accommodate hundreds of illegal minors from Somalia to Central America, accepting Mexico and Canada? Those innocent children are dangerously traveling alone into our country. Many are facing child abuse and bringing in disease that have been eradicated here at home. What does this say for the safety of our people? What do we do if 760 children are dumped into New Hampshire, as it happened in Tennessee? One, what, where, how, and how much for schools, healthcare, special education, and living expenses? The Tennessee governor was the latest to get slammed by the Washington administration for dumping of illegal immigrants in his state without any warning. Governors around this nation are concerned over the influx of immigrant children that would adversely impact their state budgets as much as, listen, 25,000 for each child. As a sovereign state, absent any governor, without an organized plan, we must say no. When I went to Concord, there was no plan. And most stand our ground, and must stand our ground with all of our efforts to push back the Trojan horse mess made by our president and the Congress. Are we ready to give up our traditions, language?
No.
Religion, society, and worst of all, to scrap our constitution? Think about what would happen of our America as we know.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Have to come up. Jack Kimball, living 24 Isaac Lucas Circle in Dover. And I have to agree with this gentleman, this is a Trojan horse issue. And we live in the greatest country that God gave man, and what we're seeing happen right now on a national level is disgrace. We have tens of thousands of people coming over our border, right before your very eyes, illegally, and that's the word, illegally. I don't want to call them undocumented, they're illegal. The first thing they're doing is breaking our laws. When they come here, they don't deserve anything beyond going home. That's what should be happening to them. It's not. Instead, we have a lawless administration that's allowing this to happen, pulling border patrol agents away from the border and allowing them to freely cross into America, and then taking and shipping them to multiple communities all over the country, including New Hampshire. It's already happened. It happened in January, I'm sure it's happened other times that we don't know about. Trojan horse is real, and it's to bring this country down internally. That's what's going on here. We have to wake up to this fact. There isn't a non-compassionate person in this room. I don't think there's a racist in this room. And anyone that would stand up here and indicate or even accuse anyone of being that deserves the reaction from the people in this room that they should get. But I'm a veteran, United States Navy, my father fought in the Second World War. So much blood and treasure has been expended already to ensure our liberty and freedom, but we all now have to wake up to the fact that it's in jeopardy, not from outside, but inside. And effective immediately, I say to all of you, you are now seeing, we all pretty much swam here to get here, but you're seeing a large point of people came out tonight, I bet you it would be times three if the weather was better. This is a passionate, important issue, and it's a local issue just as much as it's a national issue. I'm asking all of you to say no to this. Absolutely no. Because it is a Trojan horse, and it has to end, and we have to do it town by town, city by city, and take back this country. Thank you.
Haven't seen you guys in a long time. You miss me? My name is Don Membree, and I live at 3 Coverbridge Lane. And I support everything that the preceding speaker said, only I support it much more, much more, much more, because one thing that was left out is that the President Administration in Washington covers this illegal entry of these children. Our elected officials are elected, leader, a president, and all of them, they need to be thrown out. This is an awful thing to cast upon a nation. I don't have to say any more about that because it's been well addressed. What I'd like to do is say, I remember standing at the podium over at the other city hall a few years back, and everybody was scrambling, and they had the secret meetings for two years for redoing the waterfront. Anybody sitting in here tonight that said on that secret session they should take them up behind the barn? But anyway, we were all in the dark, nobody knew, the citizens knew.
Nobody knew, the citizens knew. And then comes some friends of an ex-mayor of the city. Comes in here, Mr. Dickinson, whom I knew very well from doing business at the Big Dig down in Boston. I stood at the very podium over there and railed for weeks, few people, and got this sour look from the present city manager and the city councils, with the exception of a couple of that brains. This guy, he was corrupt. It was all corrupt down in the Big Dig. And there was no way of getting around it. And he had no, absolutely no plan when he came here to make that work. Because everybody sat there and thought this was going to be la-la land for everybody. But we found out, didn't we? We found out that he wasn't worth a damn. And everybody that was associated with him was not worth a damn. Because you had plenty of time to do the due diligence on this guy. And he sat there like little, I don't know, ring kissers. And, and absorbing all the baloney that was going on in there. So, I just wanted to remind the people that you have plenty of warning from my friend Ed Wyler. I believe Mr. Kimball came down and talked a few times. A lot of people in the city talked. But we talked to deaf ears, fell on deaf ears. Well, you listen now tonight. Because the other subject that they just addressed is even more important to the city. How it ever got as far as it did without our knowledge? We ought to take them behind a barn. You don't spank them, you shoot them.
Yeah.
Because this is ridiculous. We can't have these people here. There's nothing wrong with them, except they don't conform to what we need. We need people that'll come in here if we're going to get them to fill part of the pipeline of our technical jobs that we need, the high-tech jobs. Because we failed in educating our young people to take these jobs because we ignored what was coming down the pipe years ago. And we gave everybody a free ride and promoted kids in school who could hardly sign their, sign their name on things because I know, I personally interviewed them for jobs. And they weren't educated. And they had diplomas. So, that's, that's an atrocity that they committed on the young people of this country in the last fifteen years, as far as education goes. We should need, we should really address education even more because we have other ideas that are entering into the system that's not helpful. Now...
You have one minute left.
You used to be a friend of mine. Well, I would say that there's a bridge down over, over the river that goes from the end of Covered Bridge Lane goes over to County Farm. And I, you know, somebody told me that, uh, you shouldn't brag about it, but I'm bragging here tonight. Because you know what? Nobody, hardly anybody in the community knows that we have a bridge that goes across the river. And it makes a complete connection for the conservation trail that goes from one side to the other. I guess the people who sit in their seats for all these years thought everybody in this city walked on water and they can get across the river to continue to walk it to conservation. That's not the truth, because it's only one one. One that did that, walked on water. So, I'm making an official announcement tonight. There is a bridge down there, and it's wonderful. It's a steel bridge. It's eight feet wide. It'll, it'll take care of a, a handicapped, or bicycles, walkers, runners. I don't care what it is. It's a great scene going across the Kachika River in that part of the city. A lot of people don't even know it exists because this city does not even advertise it or make it known to the people. That bridge, when it was put up, should have been told to the community, communicated to the community that it existed. Because I did, every time I talk to somebody downtown, what bridge? I don't know what is any bridge. Even Unitah. We hooked it up so we got gas over to the county farm. How do we do that? With a bridge. Because if we didn't have the bridge, they couldn't afford to go into the river because it would have cost them over two-hundred thousand dollars to drill for the gas line. Within three weeks, you'll have, of gas on County Farm and all the jail and all, all the buildings over there. It's going to save the taxpayers about six-hundred thousand dollars a year. So, maybe we can get some tax cuts. But citizens out here in the community, like myself, I'm an engineer, and I'm a doer and a thinker. And I'm a problem solver. This has been my life. We all came, few of us came together, and we engineered that gas line going over to the community. But we sold the whole project, so I could have it at my house, to get rid of the oil man. We sold the whole project to the guys over there. Thank God for Leo. He carried our water, but he didn't have to carry it very far because when you get a program presented and says it's going to save, save money, they've never heard anything like that before. So, we did get the project. All the pipes are in over there. It's ready to crank it up. And my gas got lit up yesterday at my house. So, we can do things if you call upon the community. There's a lot of, I've been telling you this for years. A lot of people in this community have a lot of things that they think about. And they look at problems. And, what'd you say?
Could you please finish up? You're way over.
I am, okay. So, but I haven't been here for months. So, roll that. What I say is, go over to the community and get, ask the people to, that when you have, when we have problems to be solved, ask them to, uh, uh, ask them to, uh, ping, to, uh, and get involved in the community. Invite them to get involved in the community. Invite them to sessions that you have problems on the table. Because, believe me, uh, there's not a problem made that can't be solved.
Thank you for coming up.
Hello, Rick Eppert. I'm seven speakers. Karen, Karen, Karen. I mean, what had a mayor? No, no, Karen. What the hell is wrong with you?
Just point of water. Right there. Point of water.
And what?
Um, you can't ask questions and expect an answer. It's not a two-week conversation.
Right. I didn't expect an answer. I don't know why you did that, but whatever. So, um, it seems I recall a while back that there was a secret contract with Casella to reopen the Dover dump. And I came to your house and told you so. And look where you are now. Having secret meetings about stuff. You know, as well as I do, you should have got out of that meeting as soon as you learned what it was about and stopped. And then told everybody in our community about what was trying to be transpired upon us. Shame on you, Karen. I'm a Dover native too, and so aren't you. Shame on you. You should never do that. You represent the people. Shame on you. I'm going to do a little demonstration on this side of the podium. See that line? You don't want to cross that line. You don't want to bring those people here. If you bring those people here, you're crossing the line. And I will tell you this. That if those people come here, they're illegals. There are plenty of former law enforcement officers and military people in this community. They swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and in New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Constitution. Don't you think for a second that if those people come into our community illegally, that those people bringing them here are violating the law? Human trafficking. And I will tell you right now that any person that drives into this community with a busload of those people will be apprehended immediately. Charged with trafficking of human people. Anybody that brings anyone into this country improperly, unconstitutionally, illegally, is human trafficking. And don't forget it. We will not allow this to happen in our community. These people, out of the kindness of their hearts, are being respectful, as well as myself. But as you can see, some of us are a little upset. And a lot of them are pissed off. Sorry, Bob. Let me just say that that would be the final straw for our community. Period. Why don't you all think about your lineage? What's that? Your mothers, your fathers, your brothers, your sisters? Kiss them all goodbye. There. Hey, you're it. Wait until he goes touch with somebody else. And then just go around the community. Maybe it would be the kids, I don't know. But I can tell you one thing. You people vote for this, you people allow this, and you'll be the next ones that get apprehended. We will not allow this. That line has been drawn, and we won't allow it. Period. I won't live. I am going to protect myself, and I'm going to protect my community at all costs. You want to violate my rights? You violate my rights. You want to try to kill me? That's over that line.
You have one minute left.
I will protect myself. And I will protect anybody else too. I don't care who they are. I dislike that man more than anybody in this community. I think he's a communist, subversive person. I will protect him. You will not do this in our community. I don't think Garrison's quite on our side. I don't think some of you other people are either. I think, uh, probably the only one that we have truly buttoned for us is Tony and Karen. I mean Catherine. Thank you. Yeah, Karen, she's on. You know, the Ever Ready Bunny that we all know? That goes around all the time. It's like, why the hell would that company use the Ever Ready Bunny? I don't know. They should take a picture of Catherine, who had treaded water, trying to help us. They could, she could be the spokesman.
Could you wrap it up, please? We have overtime.
You like Dawn Beth? Just kidding. Please, please, hear what I said. These people will be violating the law. Not just the people who want to come here or who are going to be brought here. Those in the power of bringing them here will be violating our law, and they will be held accountable. Because I am not going to die because of this. Period.
Is there anybody else here tonight to speak?
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable council members. For the record, my name is Eddie Edwards. I live at fifty-seventh Plano Drive, Dover, New Hampshire. As you can see, there are a lot of people who are very emotional, very upset. And I have to be honest with you, that's because of the lack of leadership that we have at the city level and at our state level. As a resident, I am shocked that we haven't had any information. I thought tonight, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought tonight you were going to do a presentation telling us the impact study you've done. How much this would cost the city of Dover? What would be the socioeconomic impact? What would be the impact on our school, on our community, on jobs? I don't see that happening tonight. I would hope that you would have spoken to our governor and invited her here tonight. And if you've done that, she hadn't showed up. She has a lack of leadership. I would hope that you would have invited our current state senator here to have an interview. But if he didn't, I would say he has a lack of leadership as well. And if he didn't make the invitation, that goes to your leadership. This is all happening because we haven't been informed. Now, I've heard about this for over two months now. And I'm assuming in that two-month period, you've done a lot of homework and you have a lot to tell us about what's going on. But your voices are very silent. It's been silent in the papers, it's been silent in the community. That's why you have this type of argument now. Because you're not leading. And I suspect if you don't want to lead, you should lead.
Yeah!
Leadership requires enormous courage. Because these people, our community, were asking for a plan. Were asking for you to defend us. That's what you were elected to do. You made certain promises when you were elected. When you were running, when you were campaigning, you said you were going to do certain things in this city. You're not doing that right now. Now, if you're unwilling to do that, as I said earlier, you should rethink about what you're doing. But I suppose I've heard from a, a Colonel, a state elected official, who seems to want to say that Dover is not welcoming to minority refugees. The state of New Hampshire is not welcoming to minority refugees. That won't work this time. We are not racist or bigoted because we're asking you for a plan. You won't use the shield of racism to hide your failure to lead. Won't happen. Because this is the beginning. We've asked now for you to present information to us. You haven't done that. It doesn't end tonight. It just started. And if you won't lead, we're going to lead for you. Because when we leave here, we have other plans that we're going to spread your word. We will not take this laying down. Now, I've asked some of you personally to invite Governor, I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Shaheen, Senator Kelly, uh, explain the federal law to us. Why would a federal law exist that we have no say in? I've asked the governor asking to be here. I've asked some of you to invite her here. She's not here. She's not here to explain why, why she's not outraged that our state's been under attack. Me, that's your current senator. And this forum is, is a little odd to me. Because I've never been in a public forum where elected officials say quality and pay attention to you, but not respond.
Welcome to Dover.
It's, it's quite frightening, the type of leadership that we're getting. But it's only for a couple more months.
Anybody else would like to speak to me, it's citizens for it?
You get too tight?
We're all set. Citizens for the news.
On the line, the city managers report.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Governor. As usual, I submit my report and write on the report for the first regular meeting of the month, covering economic development activities in the city, as well as legal matters that were addressed by the city's general legal counsel. Couple of items to bring your attention. Updates. City is wrapping up our summer programs in the parks and recreation area. We have had full attendance in all of the park programs. Can't cool up at the ice arena. Swimming lessons in the pools. Library reading program wrapped up. So, the five of the participants.
Look good, guys. Nice.
In person, many of the presentations. Events that were held. The young folks at grade schools. This time, I'd like to ask the finance director and one of the finance department to come to the podium. What I'd like to do this evening is recognize the city's finance director and our finance department. For the tenth consecutive year, the city has been recognized with an award for civic achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is a recognition of the staff's efforts to provide accurate, timely, and transparent financial information regarding the city. Here they come. I do want to thank the staff and employees. And also, I need to thank the council for providing the support and resources that allows the city to provide the level of financial reporting that has allowed us to receive this award. Civic achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its attainment represents a living accomplishment. Its attainment represents significant accomplishment. This award, as I said, has been issued, this is the 10th year. Recently, we did a milestone, I think, for the reason why I asked the staff here, I wanted them to be recognized. The city of Dover was one of the first communities in the state to originally receive this award, and we've continued to consistently be recognized. So I want to thank the council. We're there, I can put my hands up.
Approve the city manager's report.
Senator, I'd like to ask for Garrison, all those in favor of the second.
Number 10, approve of the minutes, NA, July 23rd, 2014.
Okay, all those in favor of the second.
Number 11, the mayor's report.
Thank you. I changed up my mayor's report today so I can answer some of the concerns that were brought up by the citizens. And anybody that knows me, I don't hold secret meetings, that I first received an email that came out and invited me to a meeting, and that was the only meeting that was held with these OREs people. What came out of that meeting was conversations and setting up dates and times when these folks would come. And we had gone through the bunches, so that everybody would understand that we just, I mean, we knew this was something of great dates. So we finally ended up with tonight's date, but obviously, these folks had canceled your meeting. What has gone around, and what I sat here and listened to, was a lot of misinformation. So I'm going to take the time to correct a lot of the things that were stated. First of all, I heard numerous people refer to illegal immigrants, immigrants, and refugees. The only thing that the city of Dover was considering, or were approached upon by, were refugees. There was nothing that had to do with illegal immigrants and immigrants. I know absolutely nothing about it. The only thing I know is what we all read on TV. So we had put together a lot of questions, because so many of us have the same concerns as you. And just recently, I met with the mayors of Rochester and Somersworth, actually, it was last Thursday. And we came up with a number of questions. But first of all, I'm not so sure everybody understands who refugees are. I'm a descendant of Greek immigrants. They came, they went through Ellis Island, as one of the speakers had addressed, and they came to work, and they had language barriers, but they worked, and they didn't come on anybody else's dime. They came because they wanted to better themselves in the United States.
I just want to point out, order, ma'am. We're not talking about refugees, we're talking about street.
So accusations that were made, that we crossed the line and held secret meetings, is absolutely unfounded. So as a group, we got together, we added questions, and what we did is that it was asked of us to have our federal government come, some of our representatives, our congressional people, and we couldn't have them come because we do not have the questions to ask them. People can sit and laugh, but the thing is, though, we needed to have more information. So together with city administration and the other mayors, I'd like to share with you some of the questions that we are going to send off to our congressional delegation. One, will the federal government aid the city of Dover in additions to our schools and/or more teachers are needed to provide a well-rounded education for these children? Does the federal government have any additional money for assistance beyond the eight months that are now provided to the refugees under the refugee relocation program? Is there any additional monies to help our schools for extra teachers needed to teach the ESLO? That's English as a second language. The city of Dover has a waiting period of up to three years for Section 8 housing assistance. Rochester and Somersworth has between two and three years presently. Are these refugees allowed to go to the top of the waiting list? What is the average time it takes to assimilate these folks into our communities? Seven, it was mentioned that these refugees require physicals and immunization. What is the city's responsibilities to provide as far as this care goes? Does the federal government aid hosting cities financially to help improve their public transportation so that the refugees would have better access to educational opportunities? Those are some of the financial burdens that could be faced by the residents of our city, or the tri-city area, or any of the states. But we needed to hear it directly from them. Not hearsay, not innuendos, not misinformation. So again, we have put these questions together, there's still a few more that are going to be added from the other communities, and we are going to send them off to our congressional delegation and have them answer these. Now, it was also mentioned at the podium that we don't have a vote, we have a voice. And I am really happy that you folks came out tonight to give us your voice. But the only thing that's dealt before the city of Dover is refugees.
They're not refugees, they're illegals.
What is a refugee? They have certain criteria that they need to meet in order to come here under refugee status. They have to come from worn-torn areas. They're being massacred because of religious beliefs or tribal differences. They're driven from their own homes, they do not have a place to go to. So it's like me coming up to one of you folks and saying, get out, you're not here, we're going to shoot you, where do you go? Some of us here have families, but those folks over there, they're all being massacred. And they also have physical abuse, mental abuse, they have clothes off their back. The city of Dover cannot take a stand until we have the answers to the financial burdens, which we do not have at this time. The letter will be sent off, it will be signed by the three mayors, because we all have that same concern. We cannot deal with, if you go to the federal government and you ask for the status of what is an immigrant, or what is an illegal immigrant? Do they have green cards? These are like apples and oranges. And for me, and I'm sure I can speak for a lot of people, that we, I mean, my heart, I said it in an earlier article, goes out to these folks. They're killed. I mean, look at what's going on today in Iraq. We have a tribe going up to a mountain because they're being massacred. So put yourself in their shoes, what would you do? I mean, are you going to help? Are you not going to help? And the thing is, though, if the federal government wants to help these folks, that's one thing, but right now, for me, and I can't speak for any of these other councilors, that we have to look at the whole story, the big picture, and get all the facts. Once we get the facts, and it's going to be, do you believe them or not believe them? But before we can make any decision, we have to hear the input from the federal government, and what they're going to do, to what their program is. And for myself, I sat in on that first meeting that I was invited to, and it was from the OREs folks, and it was, they didn't have answers. They were going to come tonight with the answers.
What do you mean?
We asked them for their metrics, we don't have their metrics. So, I mean, I can go on Google, just like anybody else, and research it out, because I have. I've never spent more time on any one subject as with this refugee relocation or reselling program.
Illegal.
So for those of you that, I mean, I can understand where you're coming from, but you have to understand some of the horrible atrocities that these folks are burdened with. And I ask you, put yourself in their shoes, and what would you do? And another one of the questions that I want to put on here, where else are these folks going?
We don't care.
Is it going, are they coming to the United States? Are they going to other countries? It's like, we all, we just can't shut our borders, and, but to me...
Do you realize this plan is much bigger than just this group of refugees?
Yes.
The government was out seeking contracts, moving people almost a year ago.
Excuse me, sir. I understand where you folks are coming from, but I know what's with us, are refugees.
You need to tell them how much it's going to cost us, which we have in here.
That's what we've been trying to find out. My questions are, I'm sorry, the federal government, we won't take them.
The questions won't be important. Just tell them no.
It's not our problem. Take care of our homeless first. Take care of our people first. Because they don't have enough to eat. Take care of those kids first.
There were no secret meetings. We need to get the facts, and to have somebody say that we're racist or bigots is totally unfounded. Because the compassion that I have not for only them, I have it for each and every one of you. And believe it or not, you can sit there and shake your heads and say no. But I think every person on this city council wants the best for humanity. And what is the answer? I don't know. But before I would make a decision, and the question was, there was one of the statements that was made by a podium speaker, said that Emma Tobin was asked about whether you're going to come or not, and she said, it's not your call. That was totally untrue. That went to the mayor of Manchester, Ted Gatzis. So it's little things like this that people create prejudice. And for me, this is a non-political, a non-prejudicial type thing, but we need the answers.
Suppose you get answers that tell you you can't afford it, will you vote no? Or where does your compassion go there? How do you say no? What do you need to say no?
Sir, it's not a two-way conversation. We need to find out before, we have no vote. We cannot, this council cannot vote and say, yes, we want them, or no, they want them, or no, they can't.
Why not?
Why not?
Just sitting there.
Why not?
You're representing the people!
It is the federal government.
No, the federal government has not had a right over the state.
Madam Mayor, please arrest me if you want, but it says "we" the people on the Constitution.
I'm sorry, that's where we stand right now. And I just want the folks out there to know that we have compassion for everybody, not just refugees.
Victory over oppression!
People here are citizens who are in terrible shape and they're being ignored.
What about our veterans? Who can't get healthcare? Why don't we take care of them first?
With all due respect, I await the motion to move the agenda, please.
Second by council again. All those in favor? Okay. Just one last thing. I do have to say that I did attend the sign-off, I mean, the send-off for Dover's nine baseball team. And that day, I gave them a challenge. The police chief and the community service director, recreation director was there. And those folks went on to have had these challenges.
I told my parents it was dark and raining out, I stick my head out the window.
And one of the challenges that I gave these kids was that if you ever see them at the regional championships, you're invited to the Dover City Council and to be on TV, and I'm going to award you a block of nation. These kids were so excited about being on TV. And so I, along with Councilor O'Connor, and Councilor Thibodeau, and myself, I already said, buddy, went to the party that they had Saturday night, and the first question out of their minds was, do we get to talk on TV? So I have invited them for September 10th, and I had confirmed that they will be here on the mail from today. So then, as a public announcement, so that folks know, that on August 29th, we'll have a signing of the governor. Her schedule has been very, it's been very difficult to try to get her to come here for the funding of the CTC program, where we were awarded that money. And it will be 9:00 AM, and the CTC is at the center, and everybody's invited.
I was just wondering when it was, when there was a call for moving the agenda that was reported by the city clerk. And if that includes my, anybody else's questions?
The point is that she asked for people that were agreeing, but she didn't ask for those opposed, and I didn't have an opportunity to vote.
Sir, that's it. So why don't we take a vote to move the mayor's report?
Motion to move.
The motion was to move the agenda forward, so the second by council. All right, that includes my mayor's report. It is August 29th, 9:00 AM.
Okay, to approve the mayor's report. Well, unfinished business, while they, while this is a second meeting, while they want to have a 79-13, hosting a city property.
The Ebola. It's a good, illuminating part of the population, and it's hard for us. That's what they're doing to citizens, senior citizens.
Okay. Hosting a city property. This is an ordinance change, and we have an addition. Is there a further discussion? I'm going to not support this, and part of it is for the reasons listed at the last meeting when this had the first reading on July 23rd. I do have a question for the city manager, I asked for a list of the properties that might technically be listed for, yes, 79-13, or most of the property.
You did ask that council chief, and I apologize if you might have tried to get them together.
Well, I still like that, but I'm not going to support this for several reasons. One is, we have to vote as a council body to name roads, as it was brought up, cross signs. I remember sponsoring ordinances about smoking in certain soccer fields, about drugs in certain fields, and we take everything on a case by case basis. We were the caretakers of the city's property, and to have a blanket, that oversight to the city manager where he can at any time, post no trespassing.